Okay, this time I'd like to call the work session for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Roll call, please.
Parker?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman?
Here.
We're in a meeting, sir. Yes, we're starting as of now, sir.
Send us link to him already.
He has sent the link to you, sir. At four o'clock.
Yesterday.
Back on. Are you saying?
Yes, he already sent it to us. Sir.
Haley, that was Haley, so I can come back to him. Wakes?
Here.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Here.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Think that there are, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Rose, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley? Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Aye.
Okay. Takes us to the board update, GM update. Does any of the board members have any updates they'd like to? To the?
I don't have an update other than I don't know if the rest of the board knows, but I did. Due to other commitments that I have, I did resign my position, my appointed position on the Public Works and Safety Standing Committee, so just so the rest of the board knows.
That is a aural appointment, so he will be probably reaching out to somebody else on the board to help himself. Anybody, anybody else? Okay, I would like to just a little update.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I just wanted to update, I did attend a DOT Talks meeting and then that DOT Talks meeting. And how it was said that it was not true that the staff didn't no longer want to meet with the Board of Public Utilities. And so I shared that information with the mayor. The mayor said asked to have all correspondents in that regard, send to him the Mayor Pro-Chem as well as the county administrator.
Thank you. I attended the Windout Economics Development Quarterly Meeting last Wednesday. At that meeting was the Mayor Pro-Chem and also Melissa Bynum, and I spoke to both of them concerning our desire to meet with the with the full commission, and they were in favor of that. I've drafted a letter, the letter originally, the mayor was supposed to be back, and it was originally just addressed to him, but he, I guess, the last last thing that I read is not going to be back full time until the second, and that Mr. Burrows is still going to be the acting acting Mayor Pro-Chem, so we revised that and sent the letter to both Mayor Pro-Chem, Burrows, and Mayor Garner requesting a meeting and listing the issues that we discussed at the last at our last board meeting. And they are very, they're receptive to having that meeting, so I look forward to getting their patient response to that.
It's good. So. It's good development. Just to follow up, Mr. Wakes, a couple of us received an email this morning from Commissioner Davis with a copy to Mr. Johnston, Commissioner Bynum, several Unified Government Staff members, and obviously Bill, and was asking about that very thing. He seemed surprised by it that that would have been represented. I did respond to the email and just included the link of our last board meeting and pointed him to the hour and minute mark of that discussion, just to not give it any color other than you just, you can listen for yourself, so I've not heard anything back since then, or we, at least I have not, so.
Okay, there's nothing else, Jeremy, you?
The only update I have is earlier this week, Monday, we did host a group of state legislators in, and they toured Neiman Power Plant and near the water, so thanks to Don Stahl and his team, Steve Green and his team, they did an excellent job. We spent about, oh, two and a half, three hours or so between the places and with some general discussion, so Kimberly and Josh helped, they were there, helped facilitate and, and I guess just be another familiar face for those that didn't know us, so it went really well, got a lot of good questions and got a lot of good voices of support, so we're gonna think, try to maybe do that annually or something like that, or as the legislature change.
I know that the, the, that they enjoy that, ones that I've talked to and also the city commissioners, when they even brought it up at that Economic Development meeting, they were talking about the water plant and the and the power plant and the tour that they they got to go on, and some of the new ones, I don't know, have participated in that, so we might want to reach out to the, to the city commissioners also.
I was talking to Senator Patty, and she, she told Steve Nerschel, she was there, and she told Steve Nerschel that she thought she was there when they opened the water plant because John, her husband, her late husband would have been on the board, and she said, I'm sure there's a picture that verifies, and she told Steve that it looked the same, just as nice as when they built it and it was opened.
They do a phenomenal job of keeping it clean and as you would want your water to be, so.
That's all I have. Okay, so that takes us to the next item, which is a discussion of the renewal of the infill housing resolution.
I think you all probably remember this, but Bill had asked, been working with Patrice Townsend to put together a presentation to go through the program and talk a little bit about what they were doing, maybe what's changed and the and the take-up rate that they've had, so with that, we can sort of freeze some and have some discussion afterward.
Thank you, thank you all, I appreciate your time for having us here today, and we just want to present Resolution fifty-two sixty-one and fifty-two sixty-two, which is the infill housing program and the development east of I-635. These resolutions were adopted in two thousand and twenty-one, and both of them expired December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, so we are asking that these programs be considered for reinstatement. So we're just gonna kind of review the two proposals, the program fees, the original fees that we had for infill housing, and then the new proposed fees, the program process, and then program results, and I'm gonna go through this like speed dating. So everybody. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read all of this, hopefully you all have a chance to review this, so I'm just gonna kind of touch the high points. And so the waiving of the water fee connection east of I-635, again, like I said, was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one, and the board determined that it was in the best interest of our community for BPU to support targeted residential development incentives and to seek increased revenues. So the waivers, yes?
Point of war, Mr. Haley has joined the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, couldn't find the link, thank you, appreciate your patience.
So the waivers do not apply to commercial industrial customers, and then this instance apartment complexes are considered commercial customers, so they don't qualify. And staff, of course, work within the framework that was established by the board to meet these actions. Fifty-two sixty-one continued, so the General Manager authorized the wave fee to waive the system development and tap fees for new single-family residents, and these were properties that were constructed east of I-635, and that were previously where we had BPU water service lines in place. The redevelopment must be a single-family home or a townhome, and the requirement is for five-eighth-inch meter, and the individual must own the dwelling. If the meter is larger than five-eighths, then there will be, they will be required to pay the amount for the established fees. Existing water lines must be adequate size to provide domestic service and fire protection. The developer or owner shall fund all improvements inside and outside of the development that are required for domestic service and fire protection.
This was the resolution that was passed or the stuff that was passed in twenty-one?
Yes, and this was the, that was the east of I-635.
Stipulations in twenty-one?
Yes. Resolution fifty-two sixty-two, this is for the infill housing program, which of course are the landbank properties, unified government landbank properties, and back in twenty-one, BPU and the UG worked together on the infill housing program to provide incentives for the landbank properties, so it's part of their program, and the program was developed to support and in an increase of tax base for the unified government, and of course, again, the BPU felt that it was in our best interest to support this program as well. Staff work within the framework established by the board, and again, this was adopted twenty-one and ended in twenty-three.
So Haley has his hand raised.
Okay.
Oh, man, I just wanted to ensure that those are only residential from the landbank properties. Are there any other, you know, waiving of connection fees for infill or other development, commercial or otherwise? Even though the program has ended, I just didn't know if there were a possibility that had been considered for that.
It was for residential.
And that was just this resolution only dated?
Yes.
Well, thank you, is there some concurrent resolution that will speak to any other development or potential development beyond residential or new residential?
For these two particular programs, both of these were strictly residential, as far as I know.
I'm under the impression, or was at the time, that if a development came in and it was not residential, if it was commercial or apartments, that sort of thing, then it'd just fall underneath the regular fee structure for establishment firms for housing projects or the commercial project.
House developments. Right, that was my concern, if there were a housing project, you know, a residential project, but it was more developed by commercial, there, I mean, multi, multi-residential project that was undertaken, but that's fine, I'm content, thank you, thank you.
Wasn't this mostly Patrice to, I mean, basically for infill housing? Taking lots and, yeah, just.
So under Resolution fifty-two sixty-two, the General Manager is authorized to provide the program incentives to developers and or builders in the form of waiving electric and water fees for the infill housing program, which again are landbank properties. The majority of the incentives were targeted east of I-635, but there are also some areas between I-635 and Seventy-Eighth Street. BPU permit and connection fees waived for certain UG landbank properties east of Seventy-Eighth Street are used for residential construction or single-family homes or duplexes. So that's kind of, I think, goes to what you were asking, Mr. Haley. And these fees are reviewed annually. Fifty-two sixty-two continues, the landowner or potential landowner was starting the process by contacting BPU Water and Electric Engineering Departments and complete a form, which will request evaluation of their property. BPU will review the current infrastructure and decide if it qualifies, and then will let the customer know what the incentives will be. As properties have different service requirements, and BPU is unable to provide a blanket waiver, we will consider each property on an individual basis. Any underground electrical service will need to be reviewed separately as these costs will likely be larger, and the water service gallon will be no longer than three-fourths inch and a meter size of five-eighths.
That's a question.
Yes.
Um, so if a landowner, a potential landowner goes through this process and completes the form, how long does it take BPU to evaluate the status of the infrastructure?
Well, they make, make their application through the regular service application process at Electric Engineering, it get processed, assigned to a designer. As part of this program, it gets a different priority assigned to it, so I would like to think that within the week, they're getting these things back.
Okay.
And the next page, this is an example of what we had in the previous resolution. A temporary electric service fee was five hundred dollars, the overhead drop allowance was a thousand, the water tap fee for three-fourths inch was three hundred, and the system development fee, five-eighths inch meter was two thousand, so the overall savings was about thirty-eight hundred dollars. What we are proposing now is a temporary electric service fee will be three fifty, the overhead service drop is two hundred, the tap fees remain the same, and the system development fee remain the same. So it's now going to be about twenty-eight fifty for the world savings, yes.
What causes the average, the projection this time to be that much lower?
It was in the allowance of the electric incentives that go beyond the electric service policy.
We're tapping that incentive a little bit now?
Yeah.
David is here.
I can talk about that, so the original allowance for overhead services on the previous tables was one thousand. I think there was a little bit of a mix-up because our, our normal policy already allows a thousand-dollar allowance for any new service regardless. I think maybe when that table was put together, those numbers were mixed up, and basically, the only thing we ended up waiving was the application fee and the meter-based fee, which was about two hundred dollars anyways. Essentially, our policy, we absorb the full cost of the infrastructure for like at least a hundred-foot engine problem.
Okay, so the actual application, not like paper application, but applying this policy will look the same, it's just we have updated numbers.
Yeah, you have a better capture of.
I saw actually changing their savings.
Thank you.
And on the next slide, that might kind of help explain it a little bit better, the electric service policy. The policy for new permanent single service, BPU is to absorb the cost of installing up to one span or about with that one hundred or less secondary infrastructure from the property line to the customer's point of service. So if the customer's point of service is less than a hundred feet from the property line, the BPU absorbs all the cost. If the point of service is greater, then the customer will be charged the full cost of the infrastructure, but will minus one thousand allowance whatever it's feet span. So, but in both cases, BPU always charge a meter-based fee of seven hundred dollars, then the application fee for seventy-five dollars. And in this resolution, both of these fees will be waived. Infill housing program process. So the UG will notify the builder or developer at the time of the purchase of the landbank, and they will tell them about infill housing form and have them to complete that and instruct them to email it to BPU, we have a dedicated email line for them to send that to. Once the email is received, this will kick off the program process. Each department, electric and water, will monitor the emails for applications. Each department will review each landbank property to verify if they qualify for the program. If the property meets the program requirements, the department will process the application and receive the waiver fee. We have a tracking system set up and on base so that all departments involved can look in at any time and be aware of where we are or the status of the program.
All right, insert another question. Thank you.
You don't ask questions in speed dating.
It said on there that they'll be notified at the time of the sale, are there other ways that we're communicating this out? That, since if it's meant that an incentive, you know, presumably for people to develop that land, it's great if they have already bought the land and then they discovered that they're getting a savings, but what are the other ways where that someone would know about that and it would incentivize them to make that purchase in the first book?
Well, unless we know that it's a landbank property which will start in the use by government, there's really no way for us to really be sure, but we are starting to ask, I think, when an electric service application is placed, when the clerk will ask them and check, make sure, I think we have a GIS tracking system to determine if it's a UG property, and so we will internally just ask just to make sure in case that part got missed over at the unified government.
Casey, do you know, is the UG advertised infill, except the program is landbank?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think our landbank provides information to the public regarding the incentives for the purchase of their land, I think that's one.
It is on our website, though.
And it's on their, it's on their website, too.
I just, I directed a couple of people that were interested in the area that I live in, and they've had a difficult time trying to find information about the landbank. So.
Because it changes so, so often.
I, I don't know, and sometimes people, if they live next door to that property, they don't always build, they just expand their garden or their yard, I mean.
They used to be able to do that, but not anymore now, if it's a building a lot, I have to build, they have to build on it.
Within five years, I think?
Two years, period of time.
I thought it was five, but I'm not.
Okay.
Green has her hand raised.
It is, yes, it is my understanding, Wendy was telling me, Wendy has her hand raised, but yes, we do do that online for the, from the UG. Okay.
Hello, this is Wendy Green, yes, you can find all that information out on the landbanks website, we are in the process of getting ready to revise the policy, however, at the moment, the proposal is to make it easier for people to get land, to get the land next to their home as part of a yard extension, we are still trying to encourage infill housing as well through our option agreement policy, which our option agreement program, which is part of that policy, but all of that information is readily available on the UG website, if you go to the wycokck.org website, and then you go to Economic Development, within that page, you'll find the landbank page, and all of that information is on that page.
Thanks, Wendy.
You're welcome.
So these are the results. Total UG landbank properties within that time period of the resolution was thirty-three. Total.
Patrice, excuse me, I'm sorry, and I know there's no questions, but is this only, is this only up until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three?
Okay, and the east of I-635, it was twenty-five, so the total amount of the one-time waiver for electric and water was a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Prior to the these parcels coming into the program, two thousand and twenty-two revenue was zero. So two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three combined revenues for the programs, I mean, what? Okay, sorry. So the combined revenue is a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven. And with that, this is our team, Chris Stewart, and for the fellow David who's here, Carlos who's here, Jenny Lee, Gloria, and Tanya. Any questions, now we can ask questions.
Yeah, where's, where's their name?
Where's my name, I'm not on, I'm just.
Thank you. Thank you.
No questions? All righty, well, thank you very much.
Well, we also have Don Stahl with us here and Doug Bowen, I think.
Just before we move on to that, the reason that we're having had this presentation on this infill is because there's been a request from the UG for us to renew, to renew that.
That's right.
Those things, and that'll be coming up in the regular meeting, I think we have a resolution, and I think it's on our agenda to approve, approve that, so.
Did, did we, because I didn't see the actual resolutions that, the proposed resolutions.
I think Chris.
The resolution is not, we can't amend the agenda.
Right.
We can't amend the agenda, and you have the resolutions put on there, if you do wish to vote on them this evening, I do have both, I just want to make sure the numbers are correct from the update on the infill.
There was, there was some discussion about, did you want another two weeks to read, ask questions, whoever, if you wanted to actually vote tonight?
So. And I think that was because in the past, you've always asked not to vote the same night, if you could have it the next week was asked. I think that's why.
Past, we don't expect to have as much information as we had this.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, and this is a renewal of something that's already been going on.
And would it be just renewed for a year?
Two.
Two years.
To, yeah, yes.
So they are prepared, if you choose to amend the agenda when we go in.
And I have the.
Yes.
Go for it.
Is it, is it critical, I mean, is it something that, I mean, it was requested by the UG, is there something that's critical or?
Can we buy for?
Again, we do have some property that's there.
Oh, there are.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
No doubt.
So they do have some requests in that they're holding.
I'm, I can vote tonight?
Player in the board? Amend the agenda or not, or if it would, would it be?
It's gonna be updated.
I'm fine if we amend the agenda.
Everybody feel comfortable, are they able to vote on it this evening?
I could do.
Okay. And just for clarification, aside from the dates, is this word for word, what's the tax in twenty twenty-one?
I think with.
There's the, the amounts.
With the updated. But otherwise, otherwise, same.
And then just to add on, Resolution fifty-two sixty-one, the top left, if we're trying, if the intent is to make it through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, that will be amended as well.
It'd be twenty.
Rob, if you're doing it through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, I just want the top to reflect it.
Thank you.
Oh.
Twenty-five.
Yep, let's read. I think that's what the intent.
In the opening paragraph.
On the very top on the left.
Right there, we're up, up in the bowl.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Chris, I think it's a, it's a desire to go ahead and put it on, amend the agenda, put it on this evening, promote.
I'll go get the numbers and get them printed out or I'll be able to. There's gonna be a number change on the.
On the, let's do the temp fees and the drop.
To reflect.
Actually be new?
The pricing.
Resolution numbers?
Yes, they will be, yes, I'm gonna go get those.
Did you get, do you make a change here?
It would be better to get them separately, so I don't have to say that it's even anything else.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we can proceed now. Sorry.
Thank you.
I think most of you know Don, and he's the executive director down at Neiman, and they're currently in their spring outage, so he's here to share a little bit about that with us and where we're at, what's going on.
All right. So as Jeremy mentioned, we're two weeks, a little over two weeks into our four-week outage on Neiman One. So overall, goals of the outage are safety and reliability. Safety to that end, we've had one near miss so far of a BPU employee, individual, I ended up with a sore ankle following a day's work in and around some pipe, standing on pipe where.
up some pipe, standing on pipe where he, this difficult area to access for the work. So to that end, I I feel like we're doing fairly well. Um hopefully we can keep that up. Um reliability, the the whole goal of the outage as far as all the work we're doing is to have a reliable operation all summer uh and to limit or even eliminate the enforced outages during the summer. So anything we can do to to extend that run and uh keep the unit online, uh that's that's what we're aiming to do this this spring. For the next slide. I didn't list everything, just listed the major projects. I did list all the capital projects. So those are the two capital projects we're uh working on and then um mentioned a a few of the uh O and M projects. Some of all the other things that are going on, there's uh several piping projects, uh smaller in nature, but just some things that we know are worn out and need replaced. Uh several valves that uh uh we found not be operating. It required an outage to replace, and so we're tackling those now. Um and then this allows time for uh an extensive amount of inspections. Um we do an inspection on our S C R catalysts, our baghouse bags. And then in just in general, open almost every door to the boiler, ducting, um get in and clean out anything uh as far as ash buildup or or any other uh you know, things we can take care of at that time as we discover them. This, the first capital project is a damper replacement. There are three sets of three. So three identical dampers, um they, you know, each set is required for each mill. Um so you can think about it like this, about uh like you think about the carburetor in your car. So it's mixing the the right amount of air with the fuel um to to get the proper combustion in the boiler. Uh so it's, you can just look at the size of these, these valves. You can see the picture of the the guy there, that's the the butterfly valve, that's seventy two inches uh in diameter. Um the picture to the left there, the I guess the set of pictures, the two of them, you see the new damper way on the left and then the old one on the right. And you see the those banes and that that old one are bent. Those dampers we're replacing are are original to the plant, so they're forty plus years old. Go to the next slide.
That the life of forty forty years?
Looks like for those it was. Uh next capital project was on the on the C D S or the circulating dry scrubber. Um this is part of the the new section of the plant, of the air quality control portion. Uh this is the the piece of equipment that reduces the S O two emissions out of the, out of the flue gas. Uh so we are, a lot of this was was some discovery work. We had to go in, see what we had, and then we were able to make some repairs. Uh what's listed, what's shown up here is this A R four hundred, that's just a type of stainless steel. Uh we end up, we'll replace half of those liners um with another type of stainless steel, the S S twenty two oh five. Um it's just through some, you know, investigation, found that to be a higher resistance to some of the conditions that uh that we see back there in in the C D S. Uh so because a few parts to this project, we had to get in, we had to clean all the ash and off the side of the uh then we did some U T testing, which is just taking the thickness of the of the components and then, you know, determining what we needed to do for repair. The next slide. This just shows a picture of the of the liner. This is the old liner. And this is not forty years old, this is only uh three or four years old. So it's a very corrosive environment. We inject lime to take out the sulfur, so it's subject to a uh a lot of a lot of things in that, in that type of environment. Let's just give you an idea of of what we're working on. The center picture is the, you know, overall picture of the of the whole C D S. It's around fifty feet tall. Uh flue, flue gas comes up from the bottom, flows up through the the mixture of lime and and ash, and that removes the S O two. Uh the picture on the left is the, just the bottom piece, the cone is what we call it. And each individual tiny, you know, little building block in there is is one liner. And so we're, it was actually probably about three feet by three feet and they're that size, so we can get them in the door. Um put them up there and then all that needs to be sealed welded um throughout, throughout all that. So that being twenty feet tall, that's a a lot of welding. That is the one job we're we're working, uh rotating shifts and and double shifting that job. So that's the the critical path for this outage. And next on to the O and M projects, we did a robotic boiler inspection. That's the first time we've done this at Nierman. It is a fairly new technology. Now, the thing you see on the uh on the right there is a is is the the piece of equipment that we rented, that these guys come out, that those tubes are straight, you know, straight up and down vertical and that um machine will get a better view of it here in a little bit, but it is um driving itself up the boiler wall, taking uh measurements of the wall thicknesses of all those tubes as it goes up. Uh so to give you an idea of before this technology, what we would have done was we would have sent several people in there with a little handheld ultrasonic um thickness tester, and they would have gone you know, from the left to the right or however you want to do it, and along each tube measured that wall thickness, wrote it down on a piece of paper, moved to the next tube. And then they'd go up about two feet and do that whole thing again for for eighty feet. So this is an enormous time saver. Um and well, there's a video here in the next slide, but it'll kind of show, you know, just uh how much more uh can be done and how we can analyze that uh you know, to a greater, greater depth and and get the right tubes replaced and ultimately, uh hopefully uh prevent some tube, tube outages. And Alfred, do you do that? This is the first time we've ever done it. If uh we would probably do it just uh as as needed on areas that we we have concern with. You know, I don't, I don't know if it'll be every year, uh but it may be a different section of the boiler each year.
Okay, so that's that's the frequency round of year.
Oh, yeah, just because of it would take a major outage to do it.
That was, I was looking at the difference between renting one and purchasing one, we value better the.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Depending on the cost.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, that's true. Go to the next slide, I believe, is the video, yeah.
Forced outages were causing major issues for a thirteen hundred megawatt power plant located in Kentucky. The plant experienced a tube leak in the lower furnace cotant slope of the boiler. After a manual inspection and boiler repairs, the leak returned in the same area in under a month. With pressure mounting, the senior engineer needed reliable and complete data. Knowing we could be on site in twenty four hours, he reached out to Gecko Robotics to take the guesswork out of their inspections. Within hours from the call to Gecko, two inspectors and one robot were deployed to the plant, ready to take action as soon as their workday ended. Once in the boiler, Gecko's robot, Toka Three, climbed the slopes and walls throughout the night. By the end of the shift, Toka Three captured over two million U T thickness readings, where previous manual methods were only captured five hundred. When the senior engineer walked into the building the next day, he was presented with a deliverable showing a large number of critical areas in need of immediate repair. After the fixes were complete, the boiler came back online while plant employees continued to study Gecko's deliverable. Since then, the Kentucky plant has partnered with Gecko for all four of their boiler units and other plant equipment. Preventative maintenance is now seamless. Information is power. And at this plant, data, speed and forward thinking were the difference in millions of dollars saved.
Obviously, a sales pitch on the website, but it gives you a good idea of what we did at the plant. Um big thing that um sure you probably heard in there was that two million measurements compared to five hundred and those five hundred would be painstaking. You know, painstakingly done, so big improvement there. Um the tubes that we're most concerned with, where we took the measurements, uh we, they were replaced in early two thousand, so they're about twenty years old.
Is this robotics that we have now purchased or do we lease it or do we?
We rented it as a service. They come out and they operate it. Um they made it look really easy there and I watched them do it. There's lots getting it set up and and working, but they did control it with a an Xbox controller, so.
Nice.
Confident. Grandkids come out, yeah.
Are there more than one company that does this or is it Gecko?
Gecko is the company. Yeah, Gecko Robotics. Do they have competitors? Not yet. I I would assume they will soon, but we did look for additional bidders and couldn't find them. I I used them at a different facility prior to B P U.
This type of inspection has never been done on that.
No.
The first time on our union?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh I think you're earning your say. All right.
Did it go over every single tube?
Not every single tube. So we had to uh, we had to clean the tubes before they could do it. Um and so if you remember the bar pictures, we didn't have a scaffold up, so we were able to get all the way up and do that. But yeah, yeah, we do have records of which tubes, you know, were replaced most recently, and so we took what we felt was the highest level concern and attack.
That seems to be the most common reason we go offline is a tube leak.
Yeah, yes. Uh, yeah. So other inspections, we did a, did part of our high energy piping inspection. Uh a high energy piping expend inspection is part of a program that gets engineered and they, you know, they evaluate your, all the pressure vessels in your unit and come up with an inspection plan based on the design life. Um and you know, while our components are are forty years old, most of these, like almost every header in the unit is is life of the unit. Um this type of program is done in in new units. So new unit comes online and they immediately start this type of inspection. It's done for for safety and reliability. Um these the vessels, you know, that you see here are operating somewhere between eighteen hundred and two thousand P S I while the unit's under operation. So if there is a catastrophic failure, it it um injure even even kill someone if they're wrong, at the wrong place at the wrong time. So um definitely a safety part of these inspections as well as we uh we failed one of these, uh it would take a considerable amount of time to to fix that. Uh so this is uh in what we call the penthouse of the boiler and a lot of times most of these headers are insulated. So a lot of the work we're, you know, even now, we're still just uninsulating and sandblasting so we can do the inspection and then we'll have to re-insulate. So a lot of this is is work with uh insulation also, and then they'll go in and do their non-destructive testing and uh we'll be insulated and move on. Not expecting to find anything, but um that's why we do an inspection. Uh last O and M project was a hydrogen cooler leak. This is on the generator. The generator is hydrogen cooled, meaning there the atmosphere with inside the generator is about ninety nine percent um hydrogen. And that gets cooled by these coolers that you see water flows through the inside of these tubes, hydrogen on the other side and and keeps the generator cool. Uh we had an indication of a leak earlier this year. Uh we were able to um get by until now, get into the major outage. And now we're going to go after this, this leak. We're going to do some testing that's gonna, it's gonna take a while, so that's why we didn't want to do it uh unplanned. But uh expect to find a a few tubes with leaks and the industry practices will plug those tubes. Uh and there's hundreds of these tubes and so that, you know, a couple here and there aren't, aren't gonna degrade the efficiency enough to to bother the operation of the unit. So uh got these coolers pulled out today. Uh testing will begin tomorrow morning, so this work is well underway. Hydrogen leak, something that happens in a small enough amount that there's uh maybe I asked this anyway. Can it happen to large enough amount that there's fear of combustion? Or are we talking a, you know, small leak in a tube, running into the whole facility and it's? Yeah. Um I mean, the the generator is is away from the turbine, so there's no source ignition, but anytime there's hydrogen at that level, there is definitely uh that concern. But hydrogen cooled generators are are common, yeah, it's large generators. There's safety measures, fire protection.
Safety measures are in place.
Yeah, they're made, they're made to run with that. Thanks. Yeah. That is all I had. Is there any other questions?
We're gonna be able to stick to our timelines?
We're looking at that right now. Uh we are looking like we're going to stick to our timeline. There is, you know, there's the uh chance that there's what we call discovery work, so we find something that's that we didn't anticipate and it's going to take us longer, but as of right now, we're looking at coming online. I believe May third, which would be a four weeks.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, does anybody uh have anything else that they'd like to bring up or talk about or discuss before we adjourn and get ready to meet again?
Mr. President, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. We adjourn the uh work session of uh April seventeenth. Uh roll call, please.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Aye.
Lack of between.
Ended before six o'clock, Beth.